Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend County Council meeting for June 6th at 6:30. Do note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you. We're going to be starting off with our agenda items for consideration. The first one is discussion of candidates for filling the District 8 Aldermanic seat. At 5 o'clock, we met and we interviewed four of the candidates. So, thank you again for those four for stepping up to serve your community. We'll open up to the council if anybody has any discussion items. Alderman Ketter.
Just clarification on how we're going to run this as far as voting, if we have a 2-2-1, or how does this work?
Yep. So, again, you need to get a majority of the votes. So, there's seven of you, so the first of four would win. If for whatever reason, we don't get four after the first round, then the weakest link, so to speak, would be off, and then you'd vote again with the top vote getters. And I'll let Ian expand.
Yep. So, when you vote, the ballots are private, but they need to be labeled. So, it's not a secret ballot, per se, because we do have to keep track of who votes in which manner. But we are doing private ballots, so they'll be collected, they're labeled with your name. So, we track who votes which way, but that you're marking the ballots in private.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All right. Then we'll move to number two, which is selection of candidate to fill the vacant office of District 8 Alderperson. So, we'll let all you vote, and then we'll pass it on to Casey. And Jay. All right. Well, that was easy. We got a winner. With a vote of 5 to 2, our newly appointed alderman is Mr. Aaron Zingsheim. Congratulations.[244.42][244.42](Applause). So, no pressure, but we're going to have you come up in front of this huge room of people to get sworn in. You have more of an audience than any of us I've ever had.
That's true.
All right. Aaron, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aaron Zingsheim.
I, Aaron Zingsheim.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office.
To the office.
Of Alderperson, District 8.
Of Alderperson, District 8.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge of the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.[302.22][302.22](Applause).
Well, I'll have you sign and make it official.
As well. Who does?
Yeah.
That is it?
Yeah. There's no going back now. So, Aaron.
Aaron, don't run.
You can grab your stuff if you want.
We're putting you to work right away.
Welcome, but once again, I'd like to thank the other three candidates. Please, 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 stay involved. There's always opportunities for different appointments to boards, commissions, various things in our community, so we'd love to have you step up in the future as well. So, thank you so much. Thanks for being here. And with that, we'll move to item number four, which is appointment of our city clerk. As the community and the council knows, it's been a little bit of a lengthy process over the past few months. We had a committee made up of Alderman Allen, our Parks Director Mike Yench, Jay, Michelle, and myself. We interviewed a couple rounds of candidates, and we have settled on selecting Lisbit. And I'm sorry, she's using her maiden name, so Lisbit Santana is our new city clerk. We did invite her to this meeting, so if you would like to come up, you can introduce yourself to the council and the community. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to finally meet you guys. Again, my name is Lisbit Santana. Thank you for the introduction. So, I'm just going to give a little bit about myself. I'm a passionate public servant. I believe in, you know, local community, and I worked at the Village of House Corners. There I was a Secretary of Building Board, Secretary of Plan Commission, where I helped commercial businesses with their licenses, and as well as anything that they needed to get started. I also helped in the Board of Appeals process, which, of course, you know, sometimes you need to build a building, you need the requirements, you need to appeal. So, I was glad to be that part of that team, and because I am a dedicated, passionate public servant, I decided to work on my MPA. I'm currently attending the University of Illinois in Springfield with a certificate in community planning. And I also currently work for WEC, which I have given my two-week notice. There, I've had, it's a great place, a lot of experience coming from the clerk and then working state level. There, I was the team lead for Badger Voters, so custom requests from politicians, and I also was, I worked with the Badger Book Team, which are the new electronic poll books, and I was part of the training team. So, we went to, visited different municipalities, taught them how to use it, that way they could train their poll workers. I was also part of the training team, where I created webinars for postcards, so that way clerks could be informed. You know, we want to make sure that the elections, we keep that integrity in every level, and of course, making and creating resources for clerks, because I know it's busy, everything is seasonal, we have alcohol licenses, building during summer, and so it's WEC, it's, we're there for the clerks. And so, I'm excited for this opportunity. I'm thrilled, and I'm happy to be here. And, well, it was a pleasure to meet you guys.
Thanks so much. And with that, I'll ask for motion to accept the appointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Butch, Look, and Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? And hearing none, all is in favor of this appointment, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congrats again. Thanks for joining our team.
Glad to be part of the team.
Thanks so much. And so, she won't be sworn in right now. You can get a couple weeks there at WEC, but then we'll look forward to having you service. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to presentations, which is an oath of office for Police Officer Nathan T. Scalone.
Nathan, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nathan T. Scalone.
I, Nathan T. Scalone.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge of the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.[584.72][584.72](Applause).
I wanted to take this chance to introduce your latest public servant, Nathan. Nathan comes to us from a city that's not all unlike West Bend, New Lennox, Illinois, suburb of Chicago, with a population around 27,000, so he's used to this type of community. Graduated from high school there and came up here to Concordia, where he earned his bachelor's in criminal justice. Nathan has been an officer with Milwaukee PD for the last two years, and I think it's really neat, there was a certain couple of things that stuck out to all of us as Nathan went through the hiring process. One, his immense pride in being a Milwaukee PD officer, but two, the realization that it wasn't quite the fit he was looking for, and that he was looking to be involved in a community where he could be someone, a true public servant, and engage in that community. And he, not us, he identified West Bend as that perfect fit. Through our time getting to know Nathan, it's very, very clear that it's going to be a great fit, so we're really happy to have you here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan, you want to have your wife up, please?
Aye.
Tradition that we've adopted from the Fire Department is to have a family member pin on the badge to our new officers, symbolizing how important the family is to supporting our officers and keeping them a whole person.
Thank you very much.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible).
And with that, I will recess the county council meeting to Public Works. Oh, I'm sorry, actually, we've got to go to licensing. Let's do that first. So, with that, I would like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for June 6th. Note that we have, let's see, 13 items here on the agenda, the first being the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes for May 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Number two, appointment of new agent Rhonda Erlab of Our Stores, number 4505, 4506, 4507, 4508.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, extension of premise license new for Don Tacos and Tequila, 326 Commerce Street, extension to provide more seating, food, and alcoholic beverages.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, original Class A beer license for La Cabana Grocery at 1116 East Paradise Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number five, renewal of Class A beer license for La Cabana Grocery of 1116 East Paradise Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six, Class A combination license renewals, which are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, Class B beer license renewals.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Class B beer, Class C wine license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, extension of premise license new for Don Tacos and Tequila, 326 Commerce Street, extension to provide more seating, food, and alcoholic beverages.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, original Class A beer license for La Cabana Grocery at 1116 East Paradise Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number five, renewal of Class A beer license for La Cabana Grocery of 1116 East Paradise Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six, Class A combination license renewals, which are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number seven, Class B beer license renewals.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Class B beer, Class C wine license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number nine, reserve Class B combination license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 10, original Class B combination license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 11, coin and precious metals or stone dealer license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 12, second-hand jeweler article pawnbroker license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, question on this one? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And last but not least, number 13, massage establishment license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, so it's going to be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, I adjourned by the call of the chair.
I would like to call to order Board of Public Works. We have five items on the agenda. Approval of the minutes of May 16, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two, approval of long-term storm water management practices maintenance agreement, HKS, the district. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for long-term storm water management practice maintenance agreement, which is typical that we go through for properties that are issued a storm water management permit. This one is for the district development, that is at the northeast corner of Washington Street and North Main Street. This agreement is to comply with our DNR MS4 permit, and also ensure that all proposed storm water management facilities on the property will be properly maintained and continue to function as intended by the property owner. We recommend that the board and council approve the agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments, questions, Mr. Alderman Allen?
Yeah, Max, I noticed on the conditions for the approval, there's a storm, it looks like a storm lateral that's no longer going to be in use, that's being abandoned in place. When they abandon it, are they going to seal up any egress and entry, so that people won't get into it? I know, I noticed they talked about leaving the manhole cover in place, but any other pieces are going to be below ground and not a problem?
So, this line is a line that used to be owned by the city, but now, with the vacation of Franklin Street and all the storms were, that used to go to this line will not go there anymore. The city did not need to keep ownership of the line, so it's going to become the property owner's line. Now, if they want to keep it as is, they can, or if they want to abandon it. So, we don't know if they are going to abandon it, or keep it as is to connect, you know, future storm water from their property there. But pretty much, it's out of the city's hands now, and the property owner will decide whether they want to keep them there, keep the manholes there, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Next, one question. That filtration system that they're putting in, is that something that they're doing on their own?
That is something that they're doing in order to comply with our storm water management ordinance. There are several ways of controlling storm water discharge rates, and also storm water quality. So, this is something that they install on their property, they are going to own, and it's for the purpose of compliance with the code. So, yes, they are doing that on their own, and they will maintain it in the future on their own.
Okay, in the future, is this something that we're going to be making businesses do, or the storm water manage, storm water DNR is going to require everybody to do that?
So, we have been requiring to meet certain goals for water quantity and water quality purposes. So, we don't tell applicants, this is how you have to meet the goal, or this is how you have to meet the goal. We just tell them, these are your numbers, these are your goals, and then they decide which tools they want to use. In this case, for example, there is no room to install the storm water management pond that would have permanent pool of water, or things like that. On other properties, we've seen underground tanks, on the QuickTrip properties notably, where the water is collected underground and filtered underground, and then released to the streams that way. So, there are different ways. There are sometimes ways that are underground or inside buildings that we don't, we don't see, and they chose this filtration device because it would, it fit their development, but it is not something that we require specifically. We don't require the tool, we just require them to meet the code.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Max. Okay, are there any other questions? There are none. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three, award contract 2208, crack sealing of pavements at various locations.
Thank you again. This item is to award a contract to crack seal the pavement at various locations throughout the city. We usually do this operation yearly, targeting the roads with a higher pavement condition rating. We seal the early cracks in the joints in order to help prevent water infiltration, which could later lead to more deterioration of the pavement. So, this year, we put out four bids, and we received three bids for the contract, and they are listed in your memo. We had designed the bids, as we did in previous years, with a base bid and two alternates in order to maximize our opportunities to cover more area, if, depending on the bid So, we've reviewed all the bids, and the qualification of Founder Asphalt Sealers LLC, which is the low bidder, and we find that they are capable of performing the work under this contract. Therefore, we recommend that the board award the contract in the amount of $74,452 to Founder Asphalt Sealers, along with a contingency of about 4.77% of the total bid for total allocation, not to exceed $78,000 for this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max? There are none. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, state municipal agreement for Roscoe Drive and Water Street resurfacing.
Thank you again. This item is to pursue a resurfacing of two roads in the city of West Bend, Roscoe Drive between Main Street and River Road, and Water Street between Forest Avenue and Indiana Avenue. Last November, the bipartisan infrastructure law, the BL, was signed, and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation announced that new federal funds would be distributed over the next five fiscal years under this program, and for the first year of 2022, it was for resurfacing projects. So, the city had applied for three projects under this program. Roscoe Drive, which, from Main to River Road, Paradise Drive from Main Street to Indiana Avenue, and Water Street from Forest Avenue to India, Indiana Avenue. Through the process, it's a very shortened process, because we have to have all our design done by August 1st, and the construction planned for next spring. The funding went through, and on May 17, 2022, which was my birthday, thank you, the West Bend urbanized area met to discuss and vote how to allocate. Thank you. The funds, and two of the West Bend projects were funded under this project, under this program. The table is listed in your memo, in the memo, and on May 25th, we received the attached state municipal agreement for the projects. They have more details on the description of the work and the funding, and we would recommend that the board and council approve the state municipal agreement, and authorize the city engineer to sign the agreement documents, as well as subsequent amendments, as long as the funding commitment for the city stays within the estimates listed in the SMA.
Second.
Any questions for Max?
Yeah.
Has the alderman done?
It's okay. How were these roads picked? Is it based on a federal standard?
Yes.
Where you wanted that money to go?
First of all, there is a standard with a functional classification, so that means only streets that are major collectors or higher, so major collectors, minor arterials, or major arterial streets needed to be selected. And then, we have other, other criteria, such as the average daily traffic, but also specifically for this year's funding for the 2022, it needed to be roads that were pretty much going to stay within their existing blueprint, their existing footprint, because anytime you go beyond that, and you may impact the ditches or other pieces of environment, you have to go through several steps through the analysis.
Yeah, yeah.
Historical research, environmental, and then, so, because of the compressed timeframe, we would not have time to do all these steps, or real estate acquisition either.
Yeah.
So, we had to pick roads where we could stay within the current, the current footprint of the road.
Sure, sure. That makes sense. Thanks, Max.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you. Good night.
Item number five, Redner Park Beach renovations. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope you got a real good story for us.
Well, I've never been known as a storyteller, but I have some information to share, how about that? Good evening, everyone. We just wanted to take some time this evening and kind of bring everyone up to date with where we are at with the swim pond situation. We did go out to bid for contract 2209, the Regner Swim Pond renovation. This project, the objective of this contract was to create a waiting pond with a maximum depth of three feet. Several contractors did pull the bid documents, but we did not receive any bids for that project. We are assuming that the quick timeline for this project was a little too restrictive for the contractors. I'd also like to pass along my thanks and gratitude towards Max and our engineering department and county engineering for jumping in on this project immediately. I left common council three weeks ago or whatever, the next day they were like surveying and everything else, so great effort, definitely defined team effort on that one. So thank you to them. Also recently, the park and recreation commission reviewed the Regner Park Swim Pond and future pond operations. Several residents did speak at the commission meeting, providing suggestions and ideas. Overall, the recommendation from the residents that spoke, they did not want to see the Regner Swim Pond filled, they liked them, keep the 14-foot depth, the diving well, the raft, things of that nature, no major changes. The commissioners themselves deliberated back and forth, they talked in depth in reference to keeping the pond, do we remove the raft, do we fill in part of the diving well, all kinds of different options. It was a, it was very much a very healthy discussion with lots of ideas and, and thoughts that were exchanged during that commission meeting. During that commission meeting, a motion was made and passed unanimously recommending that a citizen committee is formed to review the swim pond operations. This committee will provide recommendations in the future to the park and rec commission and then the common council. So use this time to gather some ideas. Alderman Kaler has started that process already, he has contacted several residents, we have our first meeting already scheduled for this week, Thursday. Randy wants to move this along quick and get some answers as to, some sustainable answers, long-term, not just 2022, 2023, some long-term answers to the swim pond lifeguard situation and things like that. So as of right now, the swim pond is closed, we do not have enough lifeguards to open for the season, the pond has been drained, the diving well always maintains some water in it, we fence that in, we have signs around that, we have signs as you enter the park, we have signs around parking lots. Our goal is to make sure our customers are aware that the pond is closed before they show up with the family and the kids and the toys and unload and walk all the way into the park and discover that the pond is closed. So we're trying to preemptively inform those folks, you know, as they're driving into the property, if they haven't heard, you know, that it was closed. The splash pad is open noon to 5:00, that started Memorial Day weekend, it'll go through Labor Day, so that's kind of where we're at right now, so.
All right, do we have any questions here, Tracy?
Are people still able to play in the sand?
Absolutely. It's a safe environment, the beach is fun, you want to go down there and build a giant sand castle on July 4th, please do so, that'd be great. Yeah, and even like the mud run and things like that, we're still going to operate the mud run, we're going to keep the slides on the north end, going down into the pond or into the sand. Actually, Wednesday this week, we're going to kind of talk about it onsite a little bit, we're going to do some dry runs and make sure things are good to go, but nope, mud run's not going to be impacted by it, so, yep.
Hallman and Model.
Is there, is there a potential, Mike, that, that I was talking to Randy, Alderman Kaler before the meeting, that we could get some action this year yet, or I suppose it depends on what they come up with?
It depends on what they come up with. I'll say if we are going to, going to keep the traditional Regner Swim Pond 14 feet deep with or without the diving well, we will not be open this year. We just, we, we don't have those lifeguards, we don't have those people. Part of the discussion is also, let's say we were able to receive some donations or additional funding to pay lifeguards from $15 an hour to $20 an hour, how many responsible 16, 17-year-olds are at home right now and not working that would be ideal candidates to be a lifeguard? I don't mean to sound rude or whatever it might be, but I'm just being very practical with that. Part of, I certainly don't want to speak for the citizen group, but part of that, you know, that group or that, those objectives, there's going to be some, some training, a schedule for 2023, push harder to get people, you know, certified sooner, it's just a lot of times, 16, 17, 18-years-old, you procrastinate a little bit and you wait till April or May to get that summer job, so there'll be some challenges and some hurdles, but no, it's, I look forward to discussion with the committee, future discussion with the park commission. I mean, the discussion to date's been great. It's, you know, Regner Park is part of the community, it's a community decision, it certainly is not my decision, so.
Sure, well, I know I can speak for a lot of my constituents in, in saying that we would really like to see some action this year.
Yeah, I, yeah, to open up Regner for swimming this year might be difficult to, impossible.
I understand it was going to be difficult, but it doesn't mean we can't do it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Hallman and Allen.
Yeah, you mentioned that there was signage telling people they couldn't swim in the pond, it was not open. Is there signage that indicates the hours for the splash pad?
Absolutely. What we did, we had some, the signs we have in Regner Park are whatever stop signs, you know, general enforcement signs, the ones we had made for this are bright yellow signs, something we don't have in the property. And we actually had the splash pad hours up on the top of the sign and the second or the lower half of the sign is that the swim pond is closed. We have them along entrance drives coming into the park, we have them around the parking lots in the park, and even if you park and start walking down towards the beach, we have additional signs there. So again, if I showed up with my kids on a Saturday afternoon, at least I could still play in the sand and I can enjoy, enjoy the splash pad, things like that, so. And even with the beach house, the beach house will be completed here shortly, it's going to be open for facility rentals, so that's going to be open and operational. On the north end of the new beach house, we're going to have public restrooms, something we've never had on that end of the property before, so we're going to, that beach house, we get phone calls on those facilities all the time, that's going to be very popular, with or without a pond. Offseason, probably even more popular.
Anyone else? Well, I have a comment. I would really like to see this committee take this thing and run with it and report to the park and rec commission, and then whatever this, I have a feeling that we have to be patient. I know that we want to, we want that pond to be, or that pool to be open, it's not a pond, it's a pool. But we have to be patient and I would much rather see next year it open with, with the council's blessing, the rec department's blessing, saying that we got this problem solved, we've got our lifeguards, but we need to do this now, we can't wait until January, February. And I know that's, no, that we never anticipated this happening, I'm sure you had no indication that this was happening, if you did, you probably would have started this back in September, but that's, that's foresight right now. But I would like to see that, hear what the committee's got to do, put this thing together, get it going, and next year, we're going to have a swimming pool open with lifeguards and everybody's going to be able to go back. COVID-19 has definitely created a lot of ammosity for everybody. I mean, we had a couple of years where we had to close it because of COVID-19. So if it means that we have to close it this year in order to make it a better year next year, I'm all for it. So my recommendation would be that let this committee work this out and have the park and rec department commission come back to us and give us their blessing. Anyone else? Randy.
Just so you know, John, I took this pretty seriously and after park and rec commission met last on the 26th, I formed, immediately formed a committee, I've got Mike Yench and Jay will join myself as they kind of drive the money and have some of the answers that we'll need, and then I also have, I had about 20, probably 25 volunteers for the committee, I've picked six of them, and we will start meeting on Thursday. My goal is to, before the end of the year, have a sustainable plan, not only for next year, but for hopefully 20, 30 years into the future. We've got some pretty good people, very diverse backgrounds, and I'm confident we'll, we'll be able to bring something back to the park and rec commission before the end of the year.
All right, thank you, Alderman Kaler, I appreciate that, and I know, I know you're going to be able to do this. All right, any, do, does the council or the, the park board of Public Works want to vote on this and recommend that the park and rec come back to us with their recommendation?
I don't think we need.
Nope? Okay, all right, all right, thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, adjourn.
Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the finance committee meeting. Tonight, there are seven items on the agenda, beginning with the approval of the minutes. The finance committee regular meeting, May 2nd, 2022, 6:25 PM.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under agenda items for consideration, number two is resolution for correction of 2021 taxes, Roaring Fork LLC DBA Qdoba, I thought for sure I was going to say that wrong, go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening, I'm coming to you tonight with a resolution for correction of tax. This is for personal property account for Roaring Fork LLC, known as Qdoba, located at 920 West Paradise Drive. On April 25th of this year, we received an email from the tax representative for this property with a correction request for 2021. They made an error on their 2021 form by including machinery that should not, that should have been tax exempt. This resolution is asking the city to accept this correction and refund the property owner the difference of $781.01. And further details are in your packet, if you have any other questions, I can answer those.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion, questions? Mark?
Yeah.
Alderman Allen, sir?
Was this, was, did they have an earlier tax year where the stuff was reported correctly? And it was just this one year, or are they just going and seeking relief for?
This is all they asked for, is going back to 2021. I believe you can only go back so far, but 2022 was corrected on the assessment rule this year, and we're asking for the correction to be made for 2021 also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Agenda item number three is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Economic Assistance Grant. And Mark, take it away.
Thank you. The city had received a $250,000 transportation grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We've, that was a, a grant for the construction of Forge Place and infrastructure within TID 14. The city has completed that work. This is a reimbursement grant program, so the resolution before you is reallocating or appropriating those funds back into the TIF accounts from which those accounts were paid, and the grant, it's, it's in accordance with our grant agreement with the DOT.
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, agenda item number four, resolution accepting a donation from John Davis, I believe this is Chief Derring.
Good evening, Mr. Davis received excellent care from our fire department and was helped by our initial responding officers. In order to thank both departments, Mr. Davis made a generous donation of $40, which he asked to be implemented into our crime prevention fund. It was placed in donations, we're looking to have it re-appropriated into our crime prevention account.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Davis.
And agenda item number five, resolution accepting donations for smoke alarm program. Chief Kudak, take it away.
Good evening. You have before you a resolution to accept a donation from Mrs. Burnek. She received free smoke alarms, free carbon dioxide detector, and a home fire survey, safety survey for her house. She was very appreciative of that and she turned around and gave us a $100 donation in order to keep the program going, so thank you, Mrs. Burnek, for that.
Awesome. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Kudak.
You're welcome, and then I'll quick plug the smoke detector program.
Sure, please, yes.
If anybody's out there that needs smoke detectors in their house, please make contact with the fire department, we'll come out and install smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detector, and do a home safety survey, all free, and it's a great program, Captain Kenny Asland heads that up and he's doing a fantastic job with it, so if you know of anybody, make sure they contact the fire department.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, great program, and thank you, Ms. Burnek. Agenda item number six, resolution to accept donations to the parks, recreation, and forestry department, I believe this is going to be Mr. Yench.
Yes, sir. This evening, we have several impressive donations that support a multitude of park and recreation activities. On May 26, 2022, the park and rec commission accepted the following donations, a $277 donation by the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation in sponsorship of the adult volleyball leagues, a $2,500 donation by Dielectric Manufacturing for sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids, a $1,500 donation by Azteca Systems for sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids, $800 donation by various citizens for the All Abilities Playground, the Fence Picket fundraiser program, also a $600 donation by Tom Limbach for the planting of some trees in Regner Park near the Labyrinth Garden, $2,000 donated by Kohler Credit Union for these, for sponsorship of the 2022 youth softball and T-ball leagues. We also have a, several donations that support the beach house renovation project. These donations combined value of $28,020. They include $2,000 from Craig and Candy Davenport, $1,000 from West Bend Air, $25,000 from the Ziegler Family Foundation Fund, West Bend Community Foundation, and a donation of $20 from Julie Sears. Again, thank you to these individuals, organizations, for their continued support of our projects and programs and activities. Without these donations, West Bend would certainly be a different community, so thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number seven, resolution authorizing the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses.
Yes, our department is seeking approval to transfer $2,000 from the YARC fund to an expense account for supplies for the Special Olympics program. Thank you.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? I just lost track of what I was supposed to do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for the generous donations to all the folks that Mike mentioned, there's too much to get into. With no more business before the committee, I adjourn by the call of the chair.
Good job, first meeting done. All right, and I'll call back to order the city council, I've had a common council meeting for the city of West Bend, we're on approval of the minutes, number one, common council regular meeting minutes for May 16th.
Second.
Thank you, it's been motion second, and any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And number two, common council special meeting minutes for May 23rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model, all those in favor, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And then we're on to consent agenda, which consists of items one through 22. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Kaler and Allen. And any comments or discussion on these? Hearing none, all those in favor, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to a public hearing, a public hearing regarding scrap dealers license renewals for American Metal and Paper and Quincy Recycles. So if anybody in the public would like to come up and speak on this item, feel free to come on up.
Motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Hallman, Model, and Allen, all those in favor of any of the public hearings, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and then we're on to agenda items for consideration, number one, granting of scrap dealers license renewals for American Metal and Paper and Quincy Recycle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen, all of the favors, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two, request for an additional records clerk position, and we'll have a brief presentation by the chief.
Thank you, I hope you had a chance, I know there's a lot of information in the memo, hope you had a chance to review that. Just as a quick summary, I wanted to make the point that this is not asking for an additional, it's asking to reinstate a position in our records clerk section that we reduced in 2011 due to some fiscal restraints, but also a reduction in our need based on technology. I find no small irony in the fact that it's actually the use of technology that is driving now our need for us to reinstate that position. Full disclosure, that position, when it was reduced, did allow for the additional IT position that supported IT, now IT department head Kurt Lulich in our department, but again, was redacted from the, from the records section. Truly driven by an increase in the use of our clerical staff going through our open records requests, it started with a vast increase in open records requests for just the actual video and written reports and those natures, I think just across law enforcement, we've seen an acceptance that it's no longer just reports, it's anything that we have. That was a force multiplied issue in 2021 when we introduced our body cameras program. Body camera program, I hope you're aware, is an extremely successful implementation by West Bend PD, it's increased our transparency in the public, it's an extremely valuable tool for our officers in their training, I reject the fact that it makes our, our officers... reject the fact that it makes our officers more accountable. Our officers were always accountable. It shows what, how great of a police department you have, our community has, on a daily basis. We see it resolving a lot of very low-level complaints that would end up taking a tremendous amount of staff time by just a clearer understanding of maybe what happened the night before, or what happened with a juvenile. As the parents come in and maybe have a clearer understanding, and then also allows us truly to review our officers' actions to make sure it's up to the standards that we expect and that they're performing themselves in a safe environment. So, I say all that to understand, I don't want this to seem as a negative. It's just truly a new cost of doing business. The cost to records comes in in the redaction issue. So, redaction means that there's certain things that are involved in every video that have to be removed from the video when they're released to the public. Much of it is driven by law, privacy concerns, victims' rights, everything down to driver's license, informations, addresses, those things. You wouldn't necessarily think about how much time that takes. National standard is a three-to-one ratio. That generally means is for every minute of video, it takes three minutes for a clerk to go through and redact to make sure that it's appropriate as we release to the public under the open records request. Doesn't sound like a big deal, three minutes. Traffic stop is 10 minutes. It's now a 30-minute review process. If there were two officers on scene, that 10-minute traffic stop, which is a very normal rate, is now an hour-long process. Extrapolate to those larger cases. One case that we had that had six officers lasted for about an hour, that's over a 30-hour redaction process for one clerk to sit through, nonstop. So, you could almost assume that one, one-hour incident would be a full work week for a clerk. So, we're not alone in this. It is across the boards as departments are figuring this out. The State Patrol's latest budget included an additional clerk in every district for just this purpose. We will find more efficiencies for this clerk's position if you approve tonight. Certainly respectfully asking you to approve. Just on a note, we do about 1,400 open records requests a year. So, process that a little bit, 1,400. That includes everything from a report to, again, like I said, this, almost an extension of the CSI philosophy that we now think that there's all of this evidence out there, and there is. So, everyone is asking now for video, squad video. It will only increase when we reinstate our squad video process. So, it's certainly a need and a cost of doing business. Addition to open records is the discovery requests. Discovery is what we're mandated to provide to the district attorney and defense attorney. So, we do two copies for every court case that's being prosecuted. That does not have the same redaction issues, but it still requires our staff to review the video to make sure it was properly documented as the right video. Make sure it's, there's nothing that would be, well, it would all go out, but to make sure it's the right thing. So, staff still has to review that. As you know, we use our dispatchers quite a bit for auxiliary purposes. We have them doing tasks. Casey certainly remembers a lot of nights, nighttime hours, doing additional task processing, paperwork, doing those things. So, initially, when we lost a clerk's position to development, you're welcome, for a great employee, by the way.
Yes.
True loss for us. We moved that to the dispatcher, late shift dispatcher who has a firm grasp and technical skills, and thought that would be a solution. It just is turning out not to be. After efficiency studies, she's spending far too much time on discovery, to the point now that it's distracting her from her, her primary duties as a dispatcher. A concern I have is that it will affect safety at some point, and is affecting her ability to do her primary functions. It's not sustainable. We'd like to return that to where it needs to be, back into the clerical section. So, discovery not certainly the, the primary driver, but an important piece to make sure that our officers are safe, our citizens are getting the service that they need from our dispatch center, and we're keeping everyone safe. Finally, I just wanted to mention the national incident-based reporting system, NiBRS. It's, if you mention NiBRS to a road cop, they're kind of going to look at you with a glaze. If you mention it to a supervisor, they're going to shake a fist at you. It takes a tremendous amount of our time, as it's about data entry, data processing. Alderman Berquist, you probably remember the beginnings of that. It's very difficult, taking officers away from protecting and serving, making sure they process it. We had a fantastic, I would say wizard at our incident-based reporting system, and our IT department head Kurt Lulich. But with his movement to greater things and a better fit for the whole city, a huge gift to the city to have Kurt where he is, that he no longer has the time and resources for us to manage that program. So, it's a small piece, but it's an important piece that we would return to records, the records department, hopefully more efficiently. And finally, I just want you to know that I am not up here asking this lightly. I discussed this with Jay for months, how we best approach, if it was appropriate to approach. I am a steward of the taxpayers' money. I don't come to you thinking it's an unlimited check. We looked at different ways to address this. We looked at different work assignments, things that would be more appropriate. The position that we are reinstating was a record supervisor. That would be helpful to our department. It really would. I don't think we're to the point that it meets the balance, though, at the cost. It would be about 25% more than the price we're asking right now. I think we handle it very well with our lieutenant of administrative aid. I think with a full staff, most of the challenges that come from supervision are staffing and workload. I think with a full staff and a quality staff, we have a great quality staff. We, they just need help. That, that need for outside management would, or an additional manager piece would hopefully be negated. And if not, we'd look strategically down the road to look at. There's some lead, lead worker pieces that are much more efficient and cost-effective that we could maybe look at doing. So, I just wanted you to know, I didn't take it very lightly coming to ask you for more money. So, we'd be able to fund this year's based on some of our savings on our openings that we've had. We did hold two community service officer positions open that were authorized that we didn't fill, knowing that we might need to, well, knowing we needed to move this way, and then certainly would be budgeting for it in our next budgeting process. So, that was a lot. So, I'll open up.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Model. And I'll open up. Is any questions for the chief?
And you, and you said, you said this year you can fund, right? And next year, it's going to be additional to the, to your budget?
Correct. We'll add it to the budget in 2023's cycle. We're here, I'm here in front of you, rightfully so, because we'll be adding it to the organization. I didn't think that was something we should do without getting your approval.
Sure, sure. Okay. Thanks, Chief.
We'll find the money.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
This is a representative position union?
It is, in the Dispatch Records Association, yes.
And the House? Then I'll call for votes. All those in favor of the, I'm sorry, the addition of the records clerk positions, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks, Chief. And we'll move on to reports. First off, is a report by Alderman, I'm sorry, regarding the deer management committee meeting. I'm assuming, John, you doing that one?
Good evening. We had our deer management meeting on Wednesday, May 25, at 5:00 PM. We had received a summary from Charles Lowell of the USDA Wildlife Services of our deer depopulation from December 21 through February 22. A drone survey was done on December 8 and observed a total of 170 to 197 deer from various locations throughout the city. Removal activities were conducted on January 4, 13, and 18, and February 2, 7, 17, and 24. Wildlife Services removal of a total of 78 deer from various locations. Locklearen Conservancy had only six deer population, which indicates that it is working. We've norm, we have now cut down the number in that area drastically. County Park had only five, and that used to be double figures. Regner Park, 16 in Regner Park. The city property east of University Drive, they had a total of 11. Bicentennial Park, just that little park, 14 deer they took out of that one. And Ridge Run Park, there were 11. Of the 78 deer, 52 were does and 26 were bucks. All deer were tested for CWD and confirmed CWD-free. A total of 1,900 pounds of ground venison was donated to the Food Pantry on April 14. The commission recommends that the USDA Wildlife Services perform another drone survey again in December of 2022, and they will let us know what the population will be at that time, and then we will make a decision at that time to move forward or stand steady. And that's it.
That sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Butchlick? Alderman.
So, so did all the deer go on a hide in Regner? It seems to be a much higher number than we used to get for Regner.
Well, they heard that there's a new beach house being renovated down there, so they're all heading down there.
So, deer prefer beach houses?
Yes.
It's all your fault, Mike.
Fun fact.
Alderman, model.
Is it, are we winding up with more deer every year?
It, they.
So, is that, is this really working?
It, well, it is, because Locklearen and the county parks, but we've never hit Regner, the Regner Park and the county parks. This is only, I believe, the third year we're in those areas. So, those areas, we need to stay on top of it, otherwise, we're going to go backwards. We, by doing Locklearen and, and the county park, you can tell that there just isn't, they're not there anymore. And the issue that we have is deer, there, you have deer hunting seizing, season with bow and after January, and they will start to mo, they will start to migrate into the city because they know it's safe. So, Regner Park, they knew we weren't in there very much, so that, that's where they're staying, and the county parks.
It just seemed like the count last year, I mean, you're saying 170 to 197 was what the drone counted this, this year. It wasn't the count last year, like 120 or something like that?
Yep, yep, yep. It just, it just seems like, they know during the deer hunting season that they, they migrate into municipalities where they know they're safe. So, obviously that's.
Last year, too, though.
Yeah. But last year, we didn't have that, that high number.
Right. Okay.
But, you know, we, if we, if we back off and just let them go, it will be right back to where we were before.
Yeah. Right. And the Food Pantry wouldn't be getting it, right? That's true. Okay. Thank you, thank you, John. I don't mean to give you a hard time. I just, I have mixed feelings about this program, so.
The only one that gives me a hard time is my wife with the deer in our backyard, so don't worry about it.
I realize she trumps me.
My wife gives you a hard time about that, too.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions? Then we'll move on to number two, report by Alderman Berquist regarding the library board meeting.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on May 17. The call to order included the pledge of allegiance and the appointment of a temporary secretary. Karen Wachholz agreed to take the minutes of this meeting for the temporary basis. We approved the consent agenda, which contained the minutes of the past meetings and the financial expenditures for April. The library board president's report introduced a couple of new members, Dr. Lester J. Wright and Katie Mattson. Congratulations to them on their appointments. We were also reminded to complete the library strategic planning survey being conducted by Paul Roback. You guys remember him, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're doing it now. We then conducted the election of officers. Current officers were all re-elected to their respective positions, with Katie Mattson being elected to the secretary's position. Financial reports were given that included donations from West Bend Mutual and the Washington County Dairy Promotions Committee. Thank you to these organizations for their contributions to the library. The library's directors' report included some statistics on library usage. We're closing in on the numbers generated by the Mead Library, which is in Sheboygan. That's the largest library in the Monarch system, which we're a part of. So, we're zooming in on their numbers, which is pretty impressive. Of note was that 60% of the voting-aged public have a library card. I thought that was kind of cool. 60% of the voting-aged public have a card. Steve, the library director, is researching grant opportunities for RFID systems for library materials. The system will assist with the check-ins and check-outs, and also with inventories. There was no new agenda items, only a reminder of the ongoing review of library accounting practices that we're doing right now. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for June 21.
Thank you. Any questions for Alderman Berquist? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Alderman Berquist for his concise report. It didn't go on for three volumes.
It was.
And do the, do the statistics include people that use the online offerings?
They do, the statistics. And if I would go through the list that he gave us, we'd be here all night. So, in the, right. Yes. Yes. Those numbers are available, and if you would like, I could find them for you.
Great. Any other questions? And next up is a report by Alderman Allen, or Aaron's, regarding the tourism commission.
I can do it. Tourism commission met on May 17, same as the library board, by the way. We awarded six organizations with event promotion grants totaling $20,000. The fall-winter grants include $4,000 to the Museum of Wisconsin Art for the Blooming Holidays Event, which is November 6, 3 through 6. $3,750 to the Downtown West Bend Association for Winter Warm-Up. That's, that's the ice sculptures and walk around downtown, have a great time. $3,750 to the Enchantment in the Park for the Enchantment in the Park, which runs from November 25 through December 24. $3,500 to the Milwaukee, or the Washington County Youth Hockey Association for youth hockey tournaments and the re-hosting of the Milwaukee Power Hockey Team to West Bend. Used to be in Milwaukee, now it's here. And so, look forward to some, some great hockey in the area. $3,000 to the Historic West Bend Theater for a new event, the Holiday Kickoff, which is a comedy and concert fest on November 3 through the 5. And $2,000 to the 1840 Brewing Company for a new event, Creep Funk Haze Release Party, which is October 15. And this is a band that apparently has a tremendous following in southeastern Wisconsin and northeastern Illinois. And so, I'm told that it's great. You should go. I, I want to make note that these are, there are two new offerings, the, two new groups that have never received donations from us. That would be the Junior Hockey, West Bend, Washington County Youth Hockey Association, and the 1840 Brewing Company. And if that sounds familiar, it's because they just did a, a well-received, what are the, Beer Garden, Beer Garden at Riverside Park on Friday. And you will also find them in the commercial space in the district soon. Any questions?
What was the name of that band you referenced?
Creep Funk Haze.
Thank you.
I, I, I had never heard of them. I'm sorry.
No, you haven't?
But they apparently have a large following, and they have, they're like, you know, they're like a miniature Grateful Dead. People actually follow them around.
All right. Any questions for Alderman Allen? And last but not least, report by Alderman Kayla regarding the Park and Recreation Commission meeting.
Park and Rec Commission met on May 26. We reviewed the Regner Park Pond. After quite a lengthy back-and-forth discussion, the recommendation was to close it for the 2022 season. And I already went through the part where I informed the advisory committee. We'll be meeting Thursday. We approved our beach house rental fees. We approved extending the park hours for a class reunion on August 13. We read a proclamation claiming July 22 is Park and Recreation Month. We approved the Traveling Beer Garden for the 1840 Brewing Company for June 3, July 7, August 12, and September 23. We also approved the Relay for Life at Regner Park on July 9, 2022. We also approved the Relay for Life at Regner Park on July 9, 2022. We approved the 1840 Brewing Company's Fall Fest for October 8 at Regner Park. And we reviewed the first quarter park trust reports, and we accepted the donations, which Mike ran the list off tonight during the council meeting. And our next meeting is June 30.
Thank you so much. And any questions for Alderman Kayla? Then, as we're at the end of our meeting, I'll open up if there's any announcements for the good of the order. Yes, sir.
I just want to remind people, if you have old computers and TVs and big-screen TVs that don't work anymore cluttering your basement, the Public Works is doing their annual electronics recycling event, so you can get rid of all these pesky electronics things you can't throw away. So, there is a chance to get rid of them this, this Saturday from, June 11, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the GFL West Bend Transfer Station. It is located at 803 North River Road. So, remember, don't break the law.
What time again?
9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, 9 to 1. There will be a line. You'll have fun. They will actually unload it for you. You just need to get it into your vehicle. They'll take it out.
It'll be a blast.
And almost exact, at the exact same time, this weekend, there is a Barton Garden ribbon cutting. And so, we're going to be doing brats and burgers, and there's going to be music, and of course, the ribbon cutting by the chamber, a proclamation by our lovely mayor, and a hot tub raffle. We're going to be doing the drawing at 2 o'clock.
Where?
Come win a hot tub.
What's the location, Justin?
Oh, at Barton Garden. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, in front of the mill, in front of the roller mill, yep.
So, you can get rid of all your electronics and then go eat brats.
Exactly. Exactly. And win a hot tub.
And win a hot tub. I'm thinking only one person gets to win that, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, sir.
I got an easy one. Seems it falls on this date. I have to congratulate my wife for 41 years she's put up with me today.
Good lord.
Congratulations to my wife.
Youngster.
Anything else for the good of the order? And having no further business for the common council, adjourned by the call of the chair. Have a good night.